Okay, it is six o'clock. We will get started with the Sohegan Cooperative School Board meeting for this evening. First thing I want to say is, you know, some of our seniors presented their senior projects today, so congratulations to them. And some more are going tomorrow and next week, so good luck to those folks and wrap it up the year. So the first thing we have on the agenda is public input, one of two. Is there anybody who would like to approach? The microphone. And seeing no one, we'll move on. So the first thing is the handbook presentation. John, are you? Excellent. You probably need to turn that microphone on first. Oh, no. There you go.
If you hold it, maybe it'll green or go turn green.
Oh, thank you. That works. Oh, yeah. I probably should have read the instructions. All right, so thank you guys for having me. I apologize for the previous week when I was supposed to present. COVID went through the house and came to me. So with regards to the handbook, Steve, do you mind flipping to the next slide? So before we kind of get into any questions you may have, just to talk a little bit about the process. The handbook, actually, the revision of it started in this last summer, in the summer of 2021. I can't tell you the specific date the other handbook was from, but it referenced trimesters, which I know is not something that's been here. For quite some time. So one of the first things that happened was Amanda Maniscalco, who's our business teacher now and formerly worked in the front office, digitized what was the handbook. And then we took that handbook and shared it out to various stakeholders. So rather than just having a few folks go through it, what ended up happening was that sections such as the piece on the Library and Media Center got sent to the librarian. About the piece about the nurse got sent to the nurse. So the folks who have the specialty in those areas were able to look at some archaic information and update it to be what is the most relevant. The book was also then brought to the community council. There was a subcommittee. We met a few times in the conference room downstairs, and some of the work that came out of that was some pronouns work. So we use students a lot. We don't have he or she. We have they and them in there. The table of contents got reworked, so if you look in the original book, the table of contents is actually alphabetical. It's not numerical. Just doesn't really equate, and a lot of us were looking at it like this just doesn't look right. Some formatting things were changed in regards to text. And then there was also a website piece, which I'll bring up afterwards, that kind of accompanies this. That's something popular you'll see nowadays that we'll get into after this. And just to also note, this draft was shared with the board earlier this year, prior to the new board coming in. So I think some of you have seen some of it before. Should I jump into the website? Does that sound good? So with the website, and this is not live by any means, but if you look at surrounding towns, particularly, for example, Bo or Bedford, what you'll find is that their student handbook is more than just something that you can download and you can have. If you go online, you can download the whole book, but when you want to quick reference certain aspects of things, there's ways to get it. And actually, a former board member had reached out to me earlier this year and said, John, I'm frustrated. And I've had kids. I've been frustrated. I've had teachers too. It's hard to find certain pieces of information. And the last thing you want to do also is download 39 pages of something to hunt for stuff. So what we've done so far, Steve, do you mind scrolling down just a little bit? Is, so we took the handbook and you'll see, Steve, can you move the mouse just a tad bit? So there's different sections. So academic life, school life, athletics and clubs, if you keep going down. Student services, technology, nurses' office, there's policy, and I believe it's schedules and calendars. Now, when you click on, when you hover over that, there will be certain subsections underneath each one of those. The information that is in there are sub-pages that are information from the handbook itself. There also might be some other information, though, like, for example, program of studies. I've linked it directly to the program of studies file. So that way, when you're hunting for that kind of information, you don't have to search all over for it. It's in one convenient spot. But Steve, if you scroll back up to the top, you'll see right there where it says PDF download, though. But once this book is approved, there still will be access to download the whole book as a whole. But if you're looking for quick reference to some of the smaller things without having to go through the whole thing, this would make that available. When I brought that to the community council, the, it was a resounding, this is so much easier. It wouldn't replace the need to, for parents and students to read through the whole book, which is why that PDF will still be there. But it'll be that reference point. So that's where we're at. Yes, sir?
Go ahead.
That's a great question. I don't know. In regards to like if, like Ctrl+F type deal where you can type in? I actually think, that actually I think is under-school life. I think it's, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. I'm not sure if Wix, which is the website creation that we used, has that feature, but I can look into that absolutely. Yep.
Okay. Yeah, you're thinking you can turn yours on. So you can make the PDF searchable, too?
Yes.
I assume they are. Okay. So I just had a couple of things, a couple of questions. And I assume, so when I look at, like, starting on page 10 of the PDF, there's just, it's a tiny bit of the formatting. That'll get fixed before?
It's actually already fixed. I don't know why for, you know, I'm glad you mentioned that because I had mine pulled up. The page 10 that I have on the document that I've been working from, yes, the school, I think school buses for yours is.
Almost everything after that, it's just off like a half a line. Okay.
Yeah, that'll be completely fixed. Absolutely.
And then, can I just, I'm getting my, my couple of things. The only, the only other thing I really had a question about is we've got a sexual harassment section on page 36, and then a Title VII Sexual Harassment on page 40.
Title IX.
Or sorry, Title IX. Yes, it's 79. And I just wondered if maybe those should be moved so they're together. Like, it's just, it's odd to me to just have two separate in different areas. So those are my only couple of comments. I love the website. I love this idea, and thank you for all the work on it.
Absolutely. So have 36 and 39 closer together.
And or maybe combined.
Or marry them. Yeah, absolutely.
Put it all together, because I think that's one of, if people look, they're going to look for that. Right. And they've got different discussions, different, different instructions on who to report to. It probably really should all be the Title IX coordinators, either in the school or at the SAU level. So just kind of marrying those up together. Anybody else have questions or comments?
Thank you. Yeah, just, just one. Also, didn't say at the beginning, this is far superior to what we started with. So thank you for your team. I was wondering, that's very easy to navigate. Is there a way to make the table of contents with like hyperlink, so if you, you know, you know what I mean, where you could like click on?
Yeah.
A thing and it will just pop you right there?
That's going to be a tech question I'll have to ask the folks who know how to do that. Yeah, I know exactly what you're saying. So you don't have to scroll down to the page. You can just click it and it brings you to. Yeah, I think that is possible. Yeah.
The PDF will let you do bookmarks on the left, so if you open them up, you just.
Or bookmarks, yeah, something like that.
I don't know how to do that, but if you run into someone who, if you can't, I know people who do, so let us know.
There, you talked about removing trimester. There's still one in here.
Oh.
On page, on page 20, yeah.
Good work.
Just to be nitpicky.
No, no, it's good.
Each year at the close of the first trimester, on page 20.
Page 20, you said?
Yeah, National Honor Society.
Fourth line down.
Thanks for that catch. And I think what's nice, too, is that as, as we move forward, now that the book's in this format, too, it'll be much easier to adjust and fix as needed, as things may change.
Yeah. I had a couple, couple of things you can consider. On page 14, the valedictorian selection, I know there's a specific date timeframe that they're using to select valedictorian. It probably should be put in there because I think it's important for that to be written out for everyone.
You said page 14?
Page 14.
Thank you.
It doesn't state the date or timeframe that they're using to select the valedictorian. And it probably should be spelled out in there, so it's clear, so we don't have confusions as in prior. We probably should put something, because otherwise people are going to be like, what timeframe? Do you want to work with John?
We'll work on that.
Perfect. Yeah, because there was talk about the whole process, which is probably still ongoing. Okay. My other thought was with senior projects, is it worth saying senior project's a graduation requirement? Or is that just in the program of studies and that's enough? Says you must complete a senior project day four. I don't. Is this a graduate? It's just a.
Well, I think the senior, we're talking on page 14? Yeah, so I think that that's in relation to senior project days, not senior project as a whole.
Okay.
In regards to like the actual senior project, it's, I think this is referencing the senior project, the actual days.
Okay.
Because there is a form that folks have to complete as.
Oh, everybody has to complete?
Yep.
Oh, I didn't realize that. Okay, okay. All right, then, not an issue there. The only other thing I had was community services. Is it worth putting the number of community service hours in there? Because it just says community service is like a requirement?
Yeah, we can do that. Yeah.
Spell out?
Yep.
Okay.
Do you know what page that one was on?
15.
Thank you.
Or 15 or 16. 16. That's all I have, but thank you so much for this work. I really, I think it's great to have everybody. Ralph, you have a question?
I know that community council had said that we'll be continuing discussion on using unweighted versus weighted GPAs for things like valedictorian selection. Will this format make it easier to change that once that actually does go through and we come to a final conclusion on that?
Yep. And what's, what's nice is because of the digital format that it's in, it's literally taking the original document, editing it, re-saving it as a PDF and loading it back in.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then one more. I noticed that under the valedictorian selection, we include he slash she, but I know that council passed a proposal this year to say that all.
Yeah, and thank you for catching that one, because there are, my, the goal when I went through this with council was to remove all of those, so I appreciate that. I'm looking at it right now.
No, there's so much editing done. This isn't, I think this format is great. It's easy to find. I like seeing it on the website like that. This is good work. On that same note, there's actually seven of them, where there it says he, she. I only know that because I searched, not because I read that quickly.
I know, I appreciate you doing that.
Do you want me to tell you?
I'll search it. Did you just Ctrl+F it and then?
Yeah, I just did Ctrl+F, he slash she, and seven popped up.
Okay, I'll take care of those. Not a problem. Oh, okay.
It might have shown up somewhere.
Okay. Okay, easy to fix, though.
Oh, yeah, some of the policies, you're right. But anyways, just.
And just one more for me then.
Yeah.
The portrait of a graduate, I like the artwork. It's different from our SAU level portrait of a graduate. Wanted to note that. I think the language looks the same. I think, I haven't compared the two. But should, should we just have one portrait of a graduate? The one with the house and it looks like a portrait versus.
Being consistent with health?
I guess so, so that it is a thing. Although this, I don't have an objection really to this either. Just an observation.
Where's the other one?
The other one.
At the school website? I mean, the district website?
It might.
Are you referring to that one?
Yeah.
Yep.
That's the one that was developed, whatever, two, three years ago.
The new one that's in there is what they, they did a lot of changes, and I know throughout the school you'll find, I don't see any in here right now. There usually are.
Yeah.
But they have all the different posters that look like those, yellow and black.
Yeah, I mean, I, so long as it's the same ideas and same information, I don't have a problem with there being different portraits for the same graduates. It's kind of an art project. It could become something. So I'm not insisting that it change back. Just wanted to point that out. I haven't seen this until, until now.
Right. Anyone else? Questions? No, we're good?
Great. I'll make these changes and then send it back?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we necessarily need to see it anymore.
We'll implement it.
Yeah.
Will do.
Nice job. Right, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
I would say, yes, I would say that if, as things develop, like weighted GPA or not, those decisions, if there's changes to it, that would be helpful to be notified.
Yeah.
Just like.
Quick bullet point.
Yeah.
Like amended on, like a date, like how they do sometimes amend it on?
Yeah, or, yeah, we'll find, we'll find a way. We'll figure out a way for just so everyone knows what the updates are.
Revision history of some.
Well, revision history would be helpful. It's just best practice for document management, right? Yeah.
Yeah, you can put a date on it when you roll it out, and then after that.
Right.
That'll be fine. Thank you so much. Thank you. Right before we move on, I just want to explain to everybody, Ralph Van Bieber is with us tonight. He was recently voted as the new community council representative to the school board. Maddie could not be here this evening, so he is here in her place because I guess he's not officially the new representative yet. Is that correct? Okay, but he will be with us soon. So welcome. Board discussion on goals. I don't want to take a ton of time, because I know we're having a retreat coming up in June to discuss this. I just want to kind of put on people's radar that we definitely, when we put goals in place this year, we want to talk about things being measurable and, you know, whether, you know, achievable, push the limit. Let's look at our vision, but I think the deep discussion is really going to be at the board retreat, more than here. Because I think there's, we're rolling into the year end right now, and I'm not sure we're all in the place to have the deep dive at this point. So is everyone okay with that? Will we hold off to the board retreat? Do we, do we know when the board retreat's going to be yet?
So Abby and I started looking and we're looking at very tentative, sometime during the week of, let's see, I think it's June 20th. If you can, and we'll get, we're working on looking at the Amherst Library for the location. It'd be like, for the first one, it'd be like in the morning, like 8:30, 11:30, a three-hour block in the morning to start. But we were hoping to, once Abby has the library all set, we will get, but look at, we're looking at that date of the week of the 20th. Maybe the 21st, if anybody has the 21st open, if we can get all this stuff. But the 21st, 8:30 to 11:30, a three-hour block for open discussion priorities. Stephanie and I will work on developing, you know, a very general topic agenda. What we thought, based on end of June, if we can get three hours in, that'd be a good start, if that's all right. The 21st tentative, we'll let you know if we can lock it in, but if you can put a hold in your calendar, that would be Wunderbar.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Yeah.
So the goal is to have a retreat?
To start, yes, to have a retreat. We're going to have a retreat. Yes, and we'll, we'll work on what we feel we can accomplish in those, in the first three hours and what's appropriate. And if anyone has feedback, we'll try and get it out to everyone so you can see it. And then, I mean, a lot of this is going to be, let's, let's, everyone needs to be on board with who Sohegan is, you know, who, understand where they were, who we are, where the vision is that my superintendency, how do we talk about the education within the school? There's going to be a lot of discussion there, I think.
So if I can make a suggestion, we're going to be breaking this up to try to not do that.
People, because people are working. You'd rather take a.
Three-hour blocks, let's just do it on one particular day.
Okay.
Have lunch called in and just hammer it all out.
Reference?
I'd almost agree, because I've seen that three hours give lots of time for things you presented to us, but not so much discussion time.
Thoughts on that?
It's up to you.
I think for those who work, it probably is easier to take one day versus multiple.
And we can certainly, yeah, how much, and we can, Stephanie, you and I can talk about how much your expectation from Mike and me for that date.
And what we can.
Open discussion. There is an attrition, you know, about, you know, six hours, three hours, but somewhere in between, but happy to look at it.
Yeah.
But sure.
Okay. All right, well, we will work on that together. You have lunch on the Green? You get lunch at Walton?
Not on a Monday. Oh, it's Tuesday. Yeah.
I'll just say something about that. I'm not opposed to doing a marathon, but whatever we hear, the first one, we're going to have to maybe step away for, and think, contemplate, and probably will have to come back for at least a second, possibly a third, to really work that through. I don't know, we can get all, get all the information, process it all in one day, and then make decisions based on that in one day. Just may not be feasible.
No, but it may be that we get decision, we get information, we have discussions, and then as we come into the next couple of board meetings from that.
Yeah, right. Okay, I mean.
So I'm going to do this, so I know, I have a meeting with Steve on Wednesday. And Chrissy, we can talk about what's appropriate for the quantity of data to download in a day. And, and then figure out what those next steps might look like. So is it a four-hour day? Is it a five-hour day? Is it, and not burn everyone out, but we'll talk through that.
Perfect.
Okay. All right. Understood, though, those who work need the scheduled time easier. Appreciate that. Okay. So community council, mental health proposal. I know we have some friends with us from the school who were instrumental in preparing this proposal for community council and having it pass through. So now it's at the board level because it involves us potentially having to change one of our policies. So would you like to introduce yourselves? And go ahead.
Hi, I'm Nick Brown. I'm a junior.
Hi, I'm Shi Lujo. She's legal. I'm the school social worker.
Do you, do you have a presentation prepared, or how do you?
I was in the middle of making one, but I feel like it's not really needed, because I think, I think it's better if I just kind of explain.
Please.
What it is. So this is going to change policy JH, which is now going to be adding a brand-new reason for absence, which is tending to mental or behavioral health. The reasons for doing this was because in a 2019 youth risk behavior survey, it had been revealed that like four point, sorry, four point, sorry, 1.4% of people had actually attempted at suicide in the school. And I, this is some pretty daunting numbers, especially in a school this big. And the solution to that was allowing for people to have something as, I don't really like to call it the Mental Health Day, because it's not really like, that's kind of like, not really really like to call it. It's more of a, just a day for them to be able to kind of recuperate from a week's events or previous events that have occurred to them. And part of that is really just about how, sorry, I guess just going into how it works, I guess. So if you take two consecutive days, basically in the system. basically in the system, you would have been marched, or marked as absent for reasons tending to mental or behavioral health. And during that time, if you had been absent for two consecutive days, that alert would got to, to Shilu, the school psychologist, and even guidance counselors, to allow that information to be available. This also happens in a, a period where if you are taking three days, it doesn't have to be consecutive, but if you're taking three days in a semester, this will also activate and it'll, they will all be notified. Teachers will not be able to see that you were excused for mental health reasons, that will only be available to people like Shilu. So, that's kind of the whole basis and the, what it does.
Okay. Anyone who was part of community council in the process, do you, do you want to speak to it at all, or, or the process that went through?
I think that at community council, we showed a rather positive response to this. I don't remember the exact vote on the final proposal, but I, it was certainly a large majority. The only concerns that we really addressed were students possibly abusing us to skip on school. Obviously, that's something that's going to be a concern if you tell kids that they can leave for mental health. But we do have a system where we contact Shilu if people take more days than is reasonable, or if they take more than three days in a semester at all. They would be deferred to Shilu and she would talk with them and see where they can move forward from there. I know we discussed options of perhaps contacting parents and designing a plan from there using Shilu and the school's mental health professionals. So, I think we tried to cover all the bases with this one, Chris.
Yes.
So, one thing that I can, think came up in the discussion is that the contact after those two days or three in a semester might be as simple as someone like Shilu just checking in with the parents. Have you got a good plan? Is everything, do you need support? Versus a required program or anything like that. So, it's really just designed to make sure that parents and, and students have the support that they need in that situation. I've gotten a couple of community members with questions about, is this designed to invade the space of, of parents? And I think that a parent has to make the decision to call the absence that way versus calling it an illness. So, if they were looking for more privacy, they might choose not to call it that way into the school, but it's, it's completely optional as far as the parent opting into it. And so, for those reasons, I can support that.
Okay. Yes, Shilu, please.
I ju- sorry. Shorter than I seem. I, I think one of the things that we talked about kind of at length was around really de-stigmatizing, de-stigmatizing mental health as a way to need to take an absence in any way that if you had a headache and you couldn't come to school, you would call and you'd say, hey Linda, you know, Amy's got a headache, she's not coming to school. And this is another way for parents and students to feel comfortable saying, hey, I'm struggling with something. So, we really want to promote that. And I do want to just say today is Mental Health Action Day, so I think today's a really good day that we're doing this.
Nick planned that. And I think that Lisa, actually who happens to be sitting here in the audience, made a really good point that we want a culture, like we value truth and honesty. And so, allowing people the ability to be honest about their reason for absence might be in keeping with our mission here.
For me, it's just creating an idea of culture of safety, because if we're going to advertise this school that respects the community and the students themselves, I think it's important that, like, we do have to, I, I, I don't want to call it as innovation or privacy because it's more of just, we're making sure the students are safe and they have the resources they need and they're able to reach out. It, it shouldn't come to a point where it's too late to reach out.
Anna? I really, really, really believe in that as well. Feel very strongly about that issue generally. And, I mean, I, I fully support it in part because I think, as the notes say, people are doing this anyways. It's just that you lie, right? They lie, it's, hey, yeah, my kid's not feeling well today. But I like the idea, which I think is a perfectly reasonable thing to do. If your child needs to stay home, if something's going on, I, I'm not critical of that. But I think having it out in the open as much as possible and giving the ability for the school to know so there can be interventions or help, because if this, if you just get, I mean, Shilu's not going to know if someone's just called out sick three times, she's going to think they've got a bad cold. But, you know, if it's three days of mental health, then maybe it, it does start rising up to the, okay, where we are, maybe this was something that wasn't on our radar and should have been, and so now it is, so.
And one more thing. I think there's already something in place that I, if I understand it correctly, where if a student was absent, even with another kind of illness, after a certain number of days, someone would be checking in with that student. So, that's kind of already in keeping with what we do.
We, we do a review of attendance every week at our MTSS meetings, so we oftentimes look at that data.
Steve?
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward. I had a couple of conversations with Mike and Tim and others, and I, I appreciate the goal and, and it's going to help data collection and, and all. And I would also like to get to a place where parents would be comfortable enough saying attending with mental health or mentally anxious, and so they can, and what Mike's vision of this place is trying to make sure we meet all student needs, you know, working on designing a room in the library where students can go and recharge. And, and, and so, I hope someday that a parent is well, is comfortable enough calling and say, look, my son's name is Chase, he's coming to school today. He really is, he might not be able to go to class, but I want him in school. I want him with Shilu, or I want him with people. And, and so, we're comfortable enough calling and giving us a heads up, because I think I want this place to be the place where students get all their, their needs met. And sometimes in the parent's judgment, the best thing for them to stay at home, but I also know sometimes you stay at home, it's harder to come the next day. So, if we can get them to come in, and, and the difference between attending school and classes, you know, maybe some kids can, can come and sending him, but I really think he needs to be in school today, but not necessarily in classes today. And give Shilu and her team a chance to do it. So, that's where I'd like to go, is to have a place well enough where a parent can call him and say, I want you to know Chase is coming to school today, he's had a very, very difficult morning. I definitely want him in school, but I'm not sure he's ready for class. And, and create that kind of environment in this place, in conjunction with what you're doing, but I would love the alternative too. I really want this place to be. And I do worry sometimes about keeping kids home alone. And, and, and in my past experience, kids needed some days, but I think they could have been better served by one of the most extraordinary people I'm looking at, with, with Shilu and others in this place, than home alone, and that's all, that's just my thoughts. But thank you for bringing this, I didn't know it was that day, it's perfect timing. But that's my, that's where my goal is, and I know that's where Mike's goal is, trying to create that environment where kids get all their needs. And I do think kids can be in school and not in class, and that can be okay. If that makes sense. Anyway.
So, I, I just want to add to that, that's exactly my thought. I, I went to a senior project presentation today that just happened to be about a student who worked through some mental health issues the past year, and she, her project was about learning a healthy lifestyle for her future. And it was fascinating because she talked about structure, talked about, you know, showing up, resilience, and the idea of having a safe space in the school, I think is a fabulous idea because I think it allows them to get up and come to school, but it has that safe space. That resilience factor is the piece for me that is so important. I mean, resilience is, it's hard, but it, it's doable in steps and in a safe place with the supports in place. And I'm going to guess honestly, it's going to require more than just the one school social worker we have in place now as a future, potentially. So, I mean, I, I was originally, I had some of the concerns, it was good to hear that you guys had the discussion at community council about, about the, you know, kids taking advantage of this. And it's like, I think we all get a day like, man, I need that personal day off, but I'm worried about kids just saying, I feel like going to be shit because it's 90 degrees and sunny. But how do you stop that? How do you sit and figure out, but how do you know if a kid's sick and they're not sick? It's, I want to teach resilience though, that is a key to me. And I like the idea of having a room available maybe in the future where they can feel safe to come in, have a support. Those are my thoughts. Dan?
I think I speak for all introverts when you, you get to the point where you've had a busy weekend and you, you, maybe you're coming off an athletic season and, you know, things have just been burning at both ends, and you just need a day to reset. You know, if you don't get it, it's going to be a rough week. You take that one day and, and it resets you and you have the energy to, to restart and, and so it would be good to be able to call in and just say, hey, I just can't do it. You know, I'm fine, but I'm just burned out, you know? Hopefully, that's part of the, the process and-
I think, I think it gives parents permission. I, I know that I've spoken to parents who have said, well, she's not really sick, so I don't know if it's excused. I, I think, and, and my answer is always, yes, it is, and it's fine. But this gives parents permission to say, you know what, Dan's had a hard day and let's let him stay home. It's important to be able to give that flexibility to parents.
Anyone? Let me give, let me give John a chance to-
Yeah, I mean, I, what's important to me about this is that parents are still making the decisions. I mean, the policy is the students aren't calling it, which I, I had the same initial thought was it's ripe for abuse, but, I mean, students aren't calling their own days off, so parents are still involved, and that's really important. Parents can use this option or not use this option, to your point. I just, I would like us to probably make sure that there's not some RSA that would, would thwart this, or I don't know if that research was done, maybe can address that. But the last one in here is such other good causes may be acceptable to the principal or permitted by law. So, there's a lot of flexibility. We have our, our policy, family vacation as an, as, we have a paragraph about that. So, I, I don't see any problem with giving the parents the option. So, so long as they know that their kids are marked in the system, and that might induce its own level of anxiety and stress, knowing that now, oh gosh, now some, now I have a, a mental or behavioral health mark. And then, as long as they know that that's for their own support and that parents know that too, I think it'd be really important. You go ahead.
The information that is shown on Power School is just absence excused. And there are some people who have different levels of authorization on Power School who can look at what the absence was for. So, it's just going to say, you know, it now says unexcused absence or absence. And that's all that's going to be seen by teachers and on record.
Right. Okay.
I mean, someone could dig around in there, but it's not-
Yeah. I, I wouldn't know it, I was reading our, our existing policy, there is a, there is an absence that's totally absent, which is athletics, excused. It's something maybe we should consider putting in there, especially because this year there's been a lot of recognition that that's been a bit of an issue for some students, given the start time change. So, it's not your proposal, but it is for the relevant in terms of rea- good, good reasons, legitimate reasons for being absent.
And I just want Ralph, because I think he has an answer to the RSA piece, and then Anna will come to you.
Uh, yeah, I, I did look into that question a bit, using some resources that I used just in extracurriculars as it was going through community council, and I couldn't find any reference to mental or behavioral health as like a definition or anything, or any sort of requirement in education. I couldn't answer that completely, but I am fairly confident that there's no definition for mental or behavioral health in New Hampshire law. And then I'd also like to talk to Steve's piece about feeling safe at Sohegan. I absolutely agree. I think that students should be able to feel safe here, but I know that there are students who don't. And even if that's not with their peers, they should be able to feel safe with whatever faculty they're with. So, I think that this is an option to provide for those students, and I think that your alternative is also a great option for students who can't approach their parents, saying that they have mental health concerns. There's an, an issue of feeling safe at home. A lot of students won't be able to utilize this because they don't feel that they are comfortable sharing that with their parents or that their parents will call that in for them. So, having Shilu is an option, which we do now, and honestly, it works wonderful. I know that Shilu has many wonderful relationships with students. I, I think that's worked wonderfully. I think that's great.
Could I, could I just respond to that, because I'm like, that, that notion of, I don't know that this proposal solves the, the challenge of students who don't feel comfortable at home, because the policy, the requirement for the parents to call in, the absences is not changed. So, that, that may be an issue, but this proposal doesn't address that issue? Okay.
I, I heard what Ralph was saying is, to Steve's point, is that somebody may come into school and ask to be in school, but not in class, because they're not feeling safe at home to be able to tell parents, but that there are resources here in student services that they can approach one of us and say, I, I need to be here, but I can't go to class. And that exists currently, and we'd like to continue to foster that culture if needed.
Okay.
All right. I know Anna had something and then Dan.
Just-
Dan has been waiting. Anna, sorry.
Really quick. The RSA is 189, colon, 34, and it's, says, "School board policies on truancy shall include, but not, not be limited to a definition of excused absences." So, it's the school board, apparently.
That defines this as an absence.
Read a deeper book.
Yep. Okay.
So, I have, I have a few different comments. I mean, on, on the abused, on the, can we use it for a day to go to the beach? Again, I think we're putting the parent, the, you know, we're trusting the parents. That's the parents, I mean, that's no different than if a parent calls their kid in sick to go to the beach. We don't necessarily want them doing it, but, you know, that's, that's the parent's choice on, on how they're going to do that and, and the kids aren't making these decisions. I think the idea of a safe area or being able to come to school and not go to class if you're unable to makes complete sense to me, much like on the de-stigmatizing, on the idea of de-stigmatizing mental health. If you have broken your leg, you might be excused from gym on a day. So, if at the end of the day, you're, something's going on and you can't attend a class, I mean, obviously, the goal is to have everybody in class as much as possible and studying and rigor and all that, but, but I think the, the recognition that occasionally there need to be adjustments is, is a good one. I don't think on John's point that an absence for sports or other school activities is an absence. Am I right on that?
Yeah.
Like, like when my daughter was at All States, I don't think she was absent that day from school. She was in another school activity. She wasn't in class, but she was, she was not, it wasn't a missed day, it doesn't show up on-
Well, the, the policy says a half-day absence is defined as a student missing more than two hours of instructional time.
But I'm saying if they're doing something associated with school-
A co-curricular is not-
A co-curricular, that's not-
That's considered instructional time? I'm just saying what's with the policy.
So, maybe that's something we need to look at or talk about, but I know there's a practical matter that, what's happening is, is if, if it's at least with the full-day thing she's done in the past, that hasn't been an-
Co-curriculars, extracurriculars, athletics are considered extensions of the classroom, and so that's-
Therefore, they are included in a gym.
Yeah, yeah, that's the way it is. And then, I think, you know, in, in partnership with the parents, if a student comes, let's use your example, and is unable to participate in gym, right? Parents know, right?
Right.
And, and I think with this, we would want to be partners with parents and families that if their, their child came to school and was not attending classes, they have the right as parents to know that, that their child is not attending classes. And I think we have to have, have that culture created, and, and that's just really important as we look at the, the various reasons for, you know, altering the attendance policy. We talked a little bit about that, there's a bigger conversation here beyond just mental health days. And, and, and Sohegan is a, a very reasonable institution where it's very student-friendly, very family-friendly. And the culture around here is if Amy Facy doesn't want her daughter to go to school today, she's going to call her daughter and, and say, you're not going to school today. And we know about that. I'm not saying, we did that a lot, and we don't, they don't have to give us a reason. But like, but that's a reality, like if you, and, and parents have that right. And so, we just want to make sure we keep that culture and relationship going with families. We don't want to be secretive and, 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 you know, kind of hidden with, with the things. And, and so, so there's the policy piece, and then there's implementation of it. And so, so that's, I just want to put that out.
Thank you.
So, you know, I'm going to just echo what everyone else said, because I, I don't think there's any negative side to this, but I want to highlight you, Nick, right? And so, awesome job coming here tonight. I've known you since you were wee, little big, and, you know, just the, the strength that you have to come tonight to speak to us is extremely- And, you know, just the strength that you have to come tonight to speak to us is extremely admirable. So, thank you very much for doing that. And I know this is a personal thing for you, right? And so, you know, the fact that you presented this idea, presented it to your peers, gained support, got a cosponsor, got faculty members involved, like that's the way this program is supposed to work. And kudos to you, and if I can give you like a huge party hat to wear, I would. Because this is something that, you know, to be honest, we, to the layperson, would even think that this is something that's important. And coming from your perspective and your situation and saying, you know what? Mental health is important. And saying that removing the stigmas from calling in and seeking help from someone like Shiloh is important. And you shouldn't feel bad about that. Families shouldn't feel bad about that. So, kudos, I'm proud of you. I know your mom and dad are very proud of you. So, awesome job and thank you. Thank you for bringing this important issue to the forefront.
Okay. I know Dan and you know, you're done. Anna and then John.
My one final thought on it, on the de-stigmatization also, is that if it's an enumerated excuse, then when the students are coming back into school afterwards, they're gonna feel more comfortable going to Shiloh or talking to someone, not feeling like, oh, God, I can't go talk to someone about what happened because we told them I had the flu. You know, they're gonna understand that that door's open. And I think anything that encourages that is a good thing.
Nick, you wanna say something?
One thing I just really wanted to add is, I think, personally, on my views, I think there's something that is, could be, I think there's something that is kinda missing, is that we do want the piece of resilience to be stronger. But in that course, we never have any really student speakers speak out about their experiences with these things. And the only opportunity to get to see that, like you mentioned before, with senior projects. And not everybody gets to attend that. So, somebody that, you know, might really need those words, don't get to hear it. I think if we wanted a huge community outreach, I think it'd be important to get some students' stories. If they don't feel comfortable speaking publicly, that is their belief and they're completely okay with denying, or with completely saying, no, I don't wanna speak to it. There, I'm going to guess there is somebody out there that has an experience that they do wanna share. And they want to let the community know that they're not alone. And that hopefully does increase the idea of de-stigmatization because that means that there are people that have led to more happier lives after they have kinda won the battle.
Thanks. Yeah. I know John, you still have something. John, you had something?
Yeah, just, Mike, what you said, I appreciate it. I think there's a corollary there, which is to say that we have, we invest in catching kids up who are absent for whatever reason. So, I think it just should be stated that if you're not here, that's okay. And teachers, other staff, right, will help you make up the work that you missed. Yeah? And that's an important piece of this, that we continue to invest in that. That's all I wanted to say about it.
Okay. Kristi?
One thing that's come up like three times today and a bunch of times when we were discussing it is this idea of abuse and kids just going to the beach. So, since Nick says, let's tell our stories, very quickly, I can think of three times, growing up, when my mother removed me from school and took me out of my home environment. And we went, one time, I remember very clearly, we went to Boston. And if you looked at us, it would look like we were shopping and going out to eat. And what was that all about? What we were really doing is I was having my mother's full attention for that day and she just listened to me. And that's all I needed to reset was just have someone listen to me, pour it all out, and just being removed from my situation. So, I think we have to be careful saying, oh, kids are going to abuse this because your day to tend to mental health might look different from my day to tend to mental health. Just a thought.
Yeah, and that was hopefully my intention, is that if we're talking about abuse of the system, then I feel like I would have failed my job in making this proposal. And it feels as though, I don't know, it would feel like as if that we can't create a welcoming community in the school.
Dan and I have Kim wants to, I don't know who. Kim hasn't said anything, let's give Kim a chat.
Yeah, all I wanna say is I think it's a great proposal. I fully support it. And, yeah, I'm not gonna say anything that you haven't already heard. Good job.
Dan, last comment?
Yep. I wanna thank Nick for bringing this up. Something that's very important to me. And I know Shiloh and I spoke briefly at the UFLD Conference last year at the Amato Center. And Nick, you brought up that you thought there should be opportunities for students to voice their own concerns. Would it be worthwhile to try to organize something like what we did at the Amato Center, where students lead and tell their stories here in the auditorium? If we have enough students willing to do it and maybe even bring in some of the ones that were there that night? If that's something we could organize, it'd help if you needed it. Okay.
All right. So, I think, is there a last, I think Ralph, very last comment? I know, one more.
In my freshman year, I was able to participate in South Hegan's Challenge Day, which was pretty much just that. Select number of students and staff, actually, got together in the gym and we played some physical activities together. And we talked about what's been stressing us recently, maybe something that we've needed to get off our chest. So, I think just having more things framed around that, I think we already have the framework for it if we've done it before. So, that should be hopefully easy to do, yeah.
Yeah, because I think Challenge Day was only specific students were allowed to go. I think if we're putting it on a larger scale where everybody's allowed to go, I think that would definitely help. And then, I think where we actually had some days where we, I can't remember what it was called exactly, but we had days where we just, it was just a day full of activities you could sign up to do as well on this day. Sorry, I just remembered it. Yeah, and I haven't really seen that happen since freshman year. I think if we could ever bring that back again, I think that would also be very helpful.
Okay. Thank you so much. Before we talk about next steps, I just wanna say thank you so much for your thoughtfulness, your strength to bring it forward. It was fantastic, so thank you.
And just to clarify, the proposal is merely adding item seven?
Yes.
The paragraph under is informational, is about a process that the.
Correct.
That the school intends to do based on this data.
Right, and that's the implementation piece, yes. So, the only thing, and what I wanna do, so instead of sending, well, we're gonna have to send it to Policy Committee, but I think what we can do.
Why?
Well.
Well, as courtesy.
As courtesy.
Okay.
But I think what we can do here is we can vote to approve this as a first read. In the meantime, we'll throw it to Policy Committee. But then in June, when we come back, we can have a second read. So, then this will be in place for the beginning of the school year, if this passes. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yep.
And I've already heard that they're interested. That's partly, I'm like, let's send it over there, just. Right, right. And we'll talk to you guys, because if we do have other school districts that are interested in this, it might be worth having you two come and speak to the other school districts as well, if you're good with that. Okay? All right. So, can I have a motion to add number seven? Let's say tending to mental health or behavioral health to amend policy JH. First, second, those in favor? And so, my God. Okay, yeah, everyone voted in favor. None opposed. So, we'll take that as a first read. We'll put it on June for a second read. And if our policy people can take, well, you know, we'll send it to Policy Committee as a courtesy and see if they're interested.
I'll communicate, yeah.
Thank you. Good addition. All right. Where are we? Oh, okay. After that, we're gonna go to the fun part of unassigned fund balance discussion. Now, that's a bit of a tough act to follow, but. So, yeah, in your packet, you have the projections that were based on year-to-date for the end of March. So, a little bit dated. This was moved from last week's meeting. And we've already actually started on, working on the projections for June, which is just a few short weeks away. So, you'll see in this projection, total revenues are projected to be $670,300. Total expenditures for unassigned fund balance are projected to be a little under $34,000 for a total year-end unassigned fund balance of $704,200. Just a note to clarify that any spending that the board would want to consider would need for potential year-end projects would need to be funded from the expenditure line. And the revenues would go to, first to fund the warrant article for the $85,000 for the TIRF. And then the rest would be used to be put towards the tax rate for next year, to reduce the tax rate. Yeah. So, you will see some changes based on the meeting to accept the revenue from Health Trust and the vehicle. So, those funds will move down to potentially be used as an expenditure. The truck funds would be used to offset the purchase of the truck, as we discussed. And the Health Trust funds, we're gonna isolate those in function code 2900. The board could certainly potentially use those for expenditures, but I wouldn't expect that the board would wish to do that. So, we are assuming that the board will want to return those to unassigned fund balance to be used to offset the tax rate next year. So, you'll have an updated projection in a few weeks, in June. We're not anticipating providing the board with projects because there won't be a lot of funds projected in the expenditure line. We did make some moves, if you recall, in April, where we, there were some projects that we had on our initial list for end-of-year projects that were moved to be funded with the Capital Reserve. So, we made some adjustments, if you recall, to that in April. So, a lot of those projects that we would potentially consider bringing forward are still being funded, but through a different mechanism. So, I'll take any questions? But yeah, I'd look for updated projections. I believe we're gonna pull year-end data as of end of last week. So, it will be, it will be more up to date than this end of March. Okay. Questions?
Two.
Yeah, sure.
The, making the food service whole comes out, can come out of revenue? If.
So, the food service transfer, right now, we're estimating $30,500, where we had originally projected needing $41,000, yeah. So, we also just received some additional funds for, it's a grant for supply chain issues that all districts had, so that we received an allocation. I believe South Hegan's is around $8,000 or so. Our business office is just figuring out the different allocations that will go to each of the districts. So, we could potentially be neutral, yeah, maybe in the black, but it's possible, which is really good news for South Hegan.
For food service?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And so, but if it needed a transfer, could that transfer come out of the revenues line? I know.
No, comes out of the, no, the expenditure, the general fund. Yep.
Gotcha. Okay, just the other question was about the Health Trust revenue?
Yep.
You said may be available as on the expenditure line?
Well, it will move down to the expenditure line, but it will be isolated in function code 2900. I wouldn't expect the board to wanna use that for an end-of-year project. So, I'm making that assumption. And which was why I wanted to be careful and have that isolated in a function code so that we could track it easily, as opposed to having it go in and potentially be shown as an increased dollar, it will show up as an increase in expenditures, but not to potentially use towards a project.
Okay.
You can tell me otherwise.
Well, no, I, we'll see. I guess the question is, number one, it for sure can be used for end-of-year project. And I guess the follow-up question is, and what, look to you guys to tell us, and Mike and Roger, like, is there something critical that does need some attention that would justify the sum of expenditure? I don't know the answer, so it's just a question to the administration to please let us know. If there is a critical need project, we should have a discussion about it.
Yeah. And, as I said, the most important projects, we moved to be funded from the Capital Reserve. So, there were some items that were projected in the CNA that we had some savings or that weren't necessary. So, we made those, the recommendation to move those to be funded out of Capital Reserve. And the board approved that in April. But certainly, if there's other projects that come up that are really important, we could bring those in June for the board to consider.
If the board has an appetite, we can surely discuss.
Yeah.
I'd like to know, just in general, what those projects are. And we could have a conversation about that and decide to do it now or to hold off. But just the awareness of what's sort of next on the list would be helpful in any event.
Yeah, we have a, we have a running list already. And as most of those items were moved to the Capital Reserve. But we can certainly present those in June for the board to consider.
Appreciate it.
I was just on that same line, gonna say, I mean, from my perspective, it's a little bit of, you know, we don't wanna be penny wise and pound foolish. I mean, I'm all for, and I think, you know, if we can save the money, we don't need to spend the money, then we shouldn't, we should use it for the tax base. But I, if there's something, I'd also don't wanna find out in two months that now there's a leak somewhere and we've gotta redo, you know, a whole room because we didn't deal with an air conditioning unit that needed to be fixed or something.
Yeah.
So.
Certainly, Roger always brings those types of items to the forefront, so.
And so, we'd hope, I think, and I think that's what you're saying. If there's something important that needs to get done, please let us know. Because we'd rather know and address it than, you know.
Yep.
Yes.
Kick it down the road.
Yeah. No, the gas fixing, that was a perfect example where we made some adjustments because that really was deemed a priority, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, so we'll just look for an update in June if there's.
Yep.
Any critical, any critical projects or, but otherwise, we'll probably just watch that balance. Because, I mean, that's not a lot. And if something should happen between now and June 30th, that is all we have. Yeah, and this is, and that's a good point, Stephanie, this is a projection. So, things do change. Right, right. Okay. Thank you for that update, Amy, appreciate it. We have volunteer policy, IJOC. Now, they're in our board packet on page forty-nine?
Forty-nine, yeah.
Forty-nine. Forty-nine is updated policy. This came from the Amherst School District. So, I know it says South Hegan policy, but we have not actually approved this yet. We had put it off because we wanted to read into it a little bit more. We weren't sure whether the high school needed this amount of detail or not. I would say that on our website, we already have a South Hegan policy, IJOC. It does not match this one, which is why this new Amherst policy was brought forward to see if we're interested in that amount of detail. And part of this came about because we had a discussion of our new policy on suspensions and whether they were gonna have some potential outside volunteers working with kids in certain out-of-school suspension situations and in-school suspension situations. So, we wanted to make sure our volunteer policy covered things. So, that's why we were looking at it. So, I don't know, has everyone had a chance to read through the new policy? Or have you read the old policy that's already on the website from 2008?
So. I read the new policy.
Yeah.
And I thought the other one, I know we're not quite there yet, but I thought we kicked these, I thought we said they were gonna get kicked back to Policy Committee. these, I thought we said they were going to get kicked back to policy committee. But maybe maybe I misunderstood that. I mean, it does seem to me like this one needs some work and while we're reviewing them all in policy committee, maybe we could do that because, for example, it's just different, I think, when you're dealing with little kids. You know, we've got guests. Every guest should be accompanied by staff while in the school building and have a clearly displayed visitor sticker. I mean, we're an open kind of campus here, especially at the ends of the day. I mean, none of us got accompanied by someone when we entered tonight. There are still students in the building and it just, I mean, I think it's different for the buildings where the doors are locked, you got to get buzzed in, someone does you, you know, what they're doing at the elementary schools, but I don't, I think a lot of this doesn't actually fit here.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't have a grand rewrite that I've proposed for today.
Have you read the policy that's already in place from two thousand eight? If you go to?
I have not. I looked at this.
Shorter.
Yeah.
What are other comments about this volunteer policy? I I I mean, I tend to agree with you a bit and I thought this was a bit more than what I think we need at the high school level. The one thing that it goes through is it did have a little bit more detail on who can the volunteer application process, which the old policy does not really discuss. And the old policy says the superintendent is responsible for developing and implementing procedures for the utilization of volunteers, selection of volunteers will be consistent with those policies and procedures on the direction superintendent and his or his her designated.
So I, yeah, I was going to ask what opinion like?
I think I do agree. I think it needs some work. There's some statements in here, each coach is certified in their sport. I don't know what that means and, you know, there's really not a certification for sport in New Hampshire. I think that it hits the most important things. It distinguishes between a volunteer and a designated. The most important thing is that if you're alone with kids, we have background checks and we make sure and that if you're a volunteer, without that, you're not being alone with kids. And that's when we implement this policy, we have a strong background check and we do have a strong, you know, following, tracking those people who can be designated volunteers. Those are the most critical points for me. We want to make sure everyone who's alone with kids is safe, but I think there's some and I agree with you, Anna, that this really doesn't fit. I mean, and today, Mike, how many volunteer or how many guests do we have in this building today?
Who knows?
Hundreds and and we don't escort them and they and we don't, I don't think we sticker them all. I don't see sticker, I mean, and not being critical, this place is built in a different level of community involvement than most schools. So I agree with you, policy committee, if I had a chance to, you know, you and I could knock something back and forth about how we make this here, but there's also some things that really don't work. I'm in if you're in.
And the current one talks about doing the background checks for the designated volunteers. I mean, the current one has.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm not, yeah.
And that's really critical and it has that, but anyway, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I and. I agree.
John?
Yeah, I I we have a current policy, it's it's functional, I think, and but if it needs to be tweaked, then we can we can tweak it or if there are notions in this new one that we can adopt, I'd be willing to to do that. I guess the question is, is there a need to revisit our volunteer? Is there a hole in our existing policy that Mike has seen or is there is there some need where we're we're opening ourselves up to liability by not having the right words on a policy or certain people are, we're not attracting enough volunteers because it's too honorous? I mean, is there some problem we're trying to solve here? I mean, or not? That's a question.
I was thinking about the secure entrance. Is there going to be a different policy for people entering once we get that the door's locked and they have to enter through their vestibule or however it's going to be set up? I mean, in addition to some of the the language in this, just grammar and consistency of language, you know, the 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 school administrator, the building administrator, you know, question whether there's only one administrator who can make this decision and it's the administrator, you know, that kind of language to me is kind of wonky and then, you know, just tailoring it to a high school situation where it's going to be a different profile than.
So so Anna and John are our policy reps. If they want to work with Steve and just a policy maybe fixed since the structure of the high school and then bring that back?
Yeah.
How's that sound?
What you're saying, our current policy has the compliance with NHI, A A to refine coaches, but why would we have that if we don't have that in the state? That doesn't be.
I don't know, to be honest with you.
It doesn't seem like a very good policy.
I've been doing this a long time. I never registered a volunteer or did anything with a volunteer at NHI, I've never known they have any capacity. It's always in-house and the most important thing is volunteers. If they're alone with kids, we make sure they're designated volunteers. If we get and then they're supervised, you know, Kelly would know and Mike would know about volunteers with the program, but to be, Ms. Peters, to be honest with you, that and I've been doing this a long time, it's new to me.
It seems like it must be some recommendation that came from somebody somewhere and.
From two thousand, two thousand eight.
I might be a numbskull on this, but we'll figure it out.
It's from a while ago.
We would be happy to tweak it and come back to the board after consulting with.
All right, how does everyone feel about that?
That seems very wise.
Are we good? Okay, we'll go forward with that.
We don't want to give him Mike a policy that he can't.
I know.
And Steve Chamberlain, there's a lot going on. I don't know that this is burning a hole in the schedule, but maybe we could, maybe Anna and I can schedule a day in July or something that's convenient and we can just bang this out.
Magic words to me.
Okay.
Those are magic words.
All right.
Sold.
Yeah, good with that.
Okay, good, okay. G B K.
This is the one I thought the last meeting we sent back the policy because it, we talked about the fact that it's got all sorts of different, like, it's just not consistent and it just hasn't, we've had one meeting so far of the policy committee and there was other stuff that was getting worked on, so this has not hit it yet, but this was the one we talked about the issue that it, like, the definitions include things that are not carried out in the rest. You know, what is a grievance? What is a complaint? What is a concern? And the very first things that use, if you have a dispute, like, it's just, it's got internal inconsistencies in the language that just need to be ironed out. And I thought we kicked it, but.
Did this, this already went through S A U, right? If I remember correctly, it's already went through S A U? So it's down down at our level. Kicking it back again is going to be the the thing. If you feel it's necessary to take back, it can't hurt to take back and ask.
I will take the brunt of taking it back and asking because I just think it's a complex policy and it's just internally inconsistent. It just.
Well, if we don't like it tonight, our only options are to send it back or to reject it.
Right, which is going to send it back anyway.
Right.
To be honest, I haven't dug in on this one yet, happy, you know, if a policy committee or subcommittee at that place stated that this one is fine.
Yeah. Anyone have particular thoughts? Kick it back to policy.
And one, can I just say something? One, internally inconsistent policies is, our policies are ripe with that, so we can start hammering those better. But this one has a structural piece that we need to consider what we want to do, which is in step four on the last page, there's bolded text that says, "The complainant may request a review by the decision of the board if entitled to such a hearing under laws, rules, or other applicable policy." So what that does is it, people who aren't entitled to a hearing, maybe because of their contract status or whatever, they can't bring this to the board level. The problem with that, maybe that was fine, the problem with that is we have changed another policy to make sure that all staff, whether you're certified staff or not, have to comply with the code of conduct and the ethics rules that all certified staff have to comply with. So if you're subject to those stricter standards of performance, then maybe we need to open up this board level to all of those people.
And what would be the difference of a certified and non-certified person? Would you make them all one?
Well, what we've done is we've made them all one in terms of their responsibilities for their ethics and their conduct, which previously was they were separate, right? Since we've made them all subject to those higher those standards, then if you're not otherwise entitled to to a hearing, I'm just saying, if you're subject to those standards, you should be able to access the board level.
Otherwise, you have no recourse.
Otherwise, you have no recourse.
I don't know about that. I would be very comfortable about affording additional rights to somebody that especially have a non-merited contract or you have anything you have with the organization here or something else because I think it would open up the doors to an awful lot of questioning of leadership that we hire in the world organization. I would have to think about that.
Well, yeah, please think about it because we've we've put additional obligations on a lot of people.
Yeah, the code of conduct isn't an obligation. It's it's kind of like a standard of walking in the door and showing up to work dressed appropriately, right? Like a minimum expectation. You should treat people respectfully, you should do your job, you know, all the stuff that's within our code of conduct, like, everybody should be following.
It's not our code of conduct. It's it's the, what's the proper, it's the Department of Education's Code of Conduct that applies to certified staff by rule. What we've done independently, as we've said, applies to them because that's the rule in the state, we said, but that also is going to apply to everybody else where it's before it didn't.
Yeah, so someone would have to articulate to me why that wouldn't apply to somebody who's not a certified person, right? So you take a look at that code of conduct, it's pretty basic stuff, right?
Well, maybe some are and some aren't, I don't know. We'd have to go line by line. It's just the notion is that those, a lot of people previously weren't subject to that and now they are.
So paras and everybody who are not certified staff are not subject to that and we've taken our policy, our school board policies and have them now subjected to that as well.
Yeah, which is fine with the.
Which P P C was full support of.
So what I what I hear is that because we extended the policy, the, you know, the code of conduct policy, they should have the same, they have the same responsibilities in their code of conduct, they should have the same recourse.
That's the question being asked.
So why would we deny them? Why would we extend them the same responsibilities but not give them the same recourse?
I don't think we're denying recourse. I mean, there's still a process that they go through, right? So if someone is having a challenge.
No, they're not certified, there's no process.
Their immediate supervisor, their immediate supervisor is going through all the things that you do if they're getting some sort of job match, right? So if somebody is a substitute teacher and has an issue with a student and it gets escalated and, you know, Mr. Berry says, hey, I really don't like the way you handled that, we're probably going to remove you from the substitute class. That person goes, you know what, Mr. Berry, that student was out of line, this was really stressful for me and I can't do it. In theory, they should be able to go to who?
Right.
The S A U office.
Right.
Say, I don't like the decision that Mr. Berry made. That person should then come to the board and say, I don't like how you removed her from the substitute class. Like, that just.
Well, we, there's been a, there's been the past a a, an issue where there was a non-certified staff where there was an issue and there was, because of the policies, had zero recourse and there was an escalation issue.
So non-certified staff would be like a kitchen worker?
Paras, yeah.
Military support staff.
All non-faculty, right?
Yep.
Non-teachers.
Who's the longest standing person currently on this board? Can you recall any time that anyone that anyone other than a teacher came before the board and said, can we have a review under under this?
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Okay, so how many, how many times?
And we said no.
Yeah.
There was only one. I recall it because I was on the meeting on the side of a highway.
Okay, so it's happened once. I'm just saying it's not, under the way the law is current or the the policy is currently, it's obviously not an incredibly, I mean, we, you know, we don't, it it currently says that anyone can come. I mean, the process is currently that you can come up and and request a hearing with the board and it's obviously not being abused if there's been one person in the history of what everyone in the here in the room can remember and the board didn't even hear it. The question may be more, should we change the second language? Because currently it says the board will schedule, anyone can request it, the board will schedule the matter for review. So it probably should be, and again, when we're tweaking it, it probably should be something like, if required by law, the board will, if not, if it's not a mandatory meeting, the board will have a vote on whether or not they're going to consider the matter and offer and afford a hearing.
I am in agreement with that sort of wording.
Right, and then if it's something that we think is, you know, just obviously this has been handled and this is just, you know, someone who's disgruntled or we can, you know, we we deal with it summarily, if it's something that that there's a feel there's a need for concern, then we can address that.
I would recommend at least considering district council, have a meeting with the council and talk about the implications of granting someone a right to a due process right that is not by statute, just to make sure you're aware of all the implications of that decision.
Do you feel, Steve, that what she just said, though, was a right? It was a potential.
So I think if 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 it was the spirit intent of the board to provide any employee the opportunity to come to the board through the process, then you would also have to require that the board, that the superintendent and H R inform them of that right as part of it, and I think that could require exponential number of increases.
Oh, yeah.
Because there is, there is no right, so there is no obligation and 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 in my role as the chief operating officer of a school district, I have handled significant number of personnel issues in realizing that my evaluation, how I handle those, and like I say, if I did that and someone came to a complaint and then I realized that the job is to evaluate the superintendent on the effectiveness of implementation of policy and how he leads the district, and if I did not handle a lot of personnel issues, I would expect to be terminated. But I would I would also would be very, just as long, if I serve at the pleasure and I and I get that, by granting someone a due process right that doesn't have it has a significant implication for the operations of a this size district. And I would only suggest to think about is having a district council talk with you about the implications of that move.
I guess, I'm just saying it's already there. I mean, that's, I'm just looking at the current language. The current language says that, you know, within five days, the complainant may request review of a decision by the board.
Not, what you're saying is our current policy, not this, not this.
The current policy, not if entitled to hearing, just how it's currently worded. So I guess that's.
This is what I recommend. Why don't, if you guys are willing to take it back and then work with district council on this one, the pros and cons of modifying that language and opening up that door a lot wider than they were exists today and then come back here and give a kind of debate or discussion about the pros and cons of it.
And maybe it's, and maybe it's something we can talk to the school board association about because that would be cheaper than the council.
I like the free advice, too. I used to call it off.
Excellent.
When I said, you'd have truly enveloped that as the council.
All right, so it sounds like there's definitely enough questions that our policy reps can work with N H S B A lawyers and policy committee and come back with a full discussion.
Yeah, so, right, so Anna's correct. I mean, this language, if entitled to, is added, it's not in current policy.
Right.
So.
Mm-hmm.
You know, one solution could be that the language says complaints may review, may request review, but was this your point earlier?
Right.
That just because you request review doesn't mean the board is going to grant your request, like the Supreme Court, they can reject your request without an explanation.
Unless, unless it's something that you were entitled to under law, in which case obviously we have to take those.
Well, yes, in which case you don't need the language.
Okay, right, yes, 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 exactly. Thank you. Just going to let them play that one out, it's like, done. Okay, going back to policy.
More than three hours, yeah.
All right, so the only thing left on the agenda is there's a resignation nominations, there've been a couple, a few that would like to take it into non-public before we come out and actually move on those. So why don't we take the public input two of two? If there's anyone who would like to come forward and say anything? No? No? Okay, we will close that section. We.
Christine and I are having a line. I'll be back.
I was just thinking, I'll see you at eight ten.
I was just thinking, I'll see you at 8:10. And things are ordered. Aide, we're done.
So why don't, can I have a motion to go into non-public? And we'll have a quick discussion.
Move to.
Dan?
Second to Glover.
Second.
Ralph.
Roll call vote to go into non-public. Grund, yes.
He did, yes.
Glazer, yes.
Glover, yes.
All right, we will go into non-public.
I'm going to make sure I do this right.
All right.
Come out, are we going to do business that you want before or enter that down there?
So wait, who made the motion and who seconded it?
Dan made it and John seconded it.
Okay, fill the Zoom. I don't, I think it's always this last part because it's, we're just going to come out and act on. Is this going to be a long non-public? I don't think so. Okay.